So it's August nineteenth, twenty twenty one, and I'm called this Lacey City Council meeting to order. And let's get started with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation and God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. To start off this meeting, we are on down a couple council members today that excuse Abenson, Councilman Greenstein and Councilmember Stedman are away this evening. But we do have an agenda and consent. I am in front of us. Can I get a motion for approval?
I move to approve the agenda and consent agenda. Too fast.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Zena, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Is there any opposed? Then that motion carries and we have an approved agenda and consent agenda items. First up on our approved agenda, under public comments, is we do have one late public comment this evening. It's Anna Schleck. Can we bring her in?
Hi. Hello there.
Anna, good to see you.
First time testifying or giving comment in this fashion. Greetings, Lacey Council and city council member, excuse me. Seeing your face on camera sometimes was a little bit jarring. I am not a resident of Lacey. My name is Anna Schleck. I live in Olympia, Washington. But I want you to know I'm a regular shopper in Lacey. I probably do the majority of my shopping there. Just this past week, I went to Fred Meyer probably three or four times, Lacey Shoes twice. And I got both of my vehicles cleaned at Sureclean Car Wash. And I mean to say that to indicate that I'm a regular contributor to your tax base. I also follow the news of all of our local jurisdictions and read something in The Olympian about a recent regional housing council meeting in which Councilmember Cox urged the enactment of a regional housing fund. And Councilmember Greenstein raised his concerns and wanted it to come back to your council for further deliberation, which is very important. Taxes in this day and age and this economy should be very well considered because it hurts people and the pocketbook. But I'm here to tell you that as a regular visitor and shopper in Lacey, I see how many more visible houseless neighbors that you have. I'm there all hours of the day. I see I've seen camps, especially when they're in early morning. I see people coming out of the bushes. I urge your consideration of an additional fiscal tool that will help Lacey respond to houselessness in your community. I also offer these comments as the longtime coordinator of the Thurston County Point in Time Homeless Census. And I think most people know that the majority of visible homelessness is located in Olympia. But there are a lot of folks that went there because there are services, there's housing, there's food. But they come from Lacey. They are residents of places like Lacey, Yelm, Tomwater, Bucauda, Rochester. I do hope that you can bring up this proposal by Councilmember Cox and give it due consideration. There's a tremendous need. I think many of you know that at least thirty percent of our neighbors are house cost burdened in their housing, which means they pay more than thirty percent of their monthly income. So that's basically it. I'm a happy Olympia resident, but I'm a devoted Lacey shopper. And we'll continue to support Lacey businesses no matter what your choices, what you elect to do. But I really hope you consider using this powerful tool to respond to our housing needs and houselessness. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Anna. Appreciate it. Thank you for shopping in Lacey. So she Anna was the only person who signed up for public comment. And so we'll go on to our next agenda. I am, and we have actually a couple proclamations today. And we're gonna start off with the Arbor Day proclamation. But before we get started, you know, as you, as you may know, the city of Lacey was one of the first communities in the state of Washington to be designated as a tree city by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Today, we are proud to be marking our thirtieth consecutive year receiving this award. So over the years, our community has invested nearly seven and a half million dollars on tree planting and care and distributed over thirty-three thousand tree ceilings to residents. We are so proud that Lacey features over six thousand street trees along our roadways. And we're equally as proud that our community maintains more than twelve hundred acres of parkland and open space, creating one of the largest municipal park systems in the South Puget Sound, and much of it permanently preserving large areas of natural forest. In recognition of these urban forestry accomplishments and the importance of trees in our community, we'd like to read the following proclamation. And we'll start with Councilman Miller, and you can take yourself off mute and start off with the Arbor Day proclamation.
Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special set aside for the planting of trees and?
Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And?
Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And?
Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community.
Therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of August twenty twenty-one as Arbor Month in the city of Lacey. I encourage all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to plant trees to provide verification for future generations to enjoy. Signed myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, this day on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And to talk a little bit more about some of our recent efforts, we're gonna bring in Jenny from our community relations.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. It's really nice to see everybody. So as we know, COVID has derailed many longstanding traditions and events over this past year and a half. And unfortunately, our Arbor Day ceiling giveaway was just another example of that. So while we couldn't give away trees this year, we did want to make sure that we provided a fun and educational activity for our community. And just to discover some of the different types of trees that we have in our city. So to do this, we created a tree search bingo game that has been going on since the beginning of August. This is proving to be a big success so far through our social media. And so what we did is we provided a bingo card on our website, excuse me, filled with photos of different tree species that you can find in our parks and neighborhoods. And we're just encouraging the community to spend some time outside locating the trees and trying to get that bingo on the card. We are also sharing a weekly fun fact and tip for trees on our social media and our website. So again, you know, while we kind of we had to pivot away from what we typically do to celebrate Arbor Day. But all of these efforts will continue through the month of August as we recognize Arbor Day as a city. So I just want to encourage everyone to join the fun.
Thank you, Jenny. And for most of the past thirty years, we've shared a tree with our sister city in Thurston County, which is Yelm. And so it's been a fun tradition all these years of all the different trees that's been planted in Yelm and trees that Yelm has given us that's been planted in Lacey. Unfortunately, this is another, you know, the second year in a row, we haven't been able to swap out or give each other some trees. However, I have a cedar tree in my, in my house that's well over a hundred years old. And you know, most of you know, I live in Old Star Lacey neighborhood. And the tree was damaged and microburst a couple of years ago. And ever since then, it's really been, I'm putting out starts all across my yard. And I have several very large starts now. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be reaching out to Mayor Foster from Yelm. And hopefully I can get them one of my starts from my cedar tree that will be planted in Yelm. So I'm trying to work out that behind the scenes. It won't be a formal Arbor Day celebration or exchange, but it'd be, I think, really neat to have one of these, you know, to see your trees. That'll grow up to be a huge beautiful tree someday in Yelm. And so I'm working at that behind the scenes and I'll, I'll let you know how that, how that goes. So thank, thank you, Jenny, for everything. We really appreciate. So next on our proclamations is our overdose awareness day. And we will get started once again with Councilmember Miller.
Whereas no city in Washington State is immune to accidental or intentional overdose. And death from drug overdose is preventable. And whereas people who experience an overdose are deserving of our care and kindness. And?
Whereas, oh, okay, I thought I was on mute. I'm sorry. Whereas stigma creates barriers to disclosing drug misuse and abuse to family, friends, healthcare providers, service providers, and others. And whereas when someone you care for dies from a stigmatized behavior such as overdose, grieving is often much harder for those left behind because of shame and guilt. And?
Whereas the city of Lacey acknowledges that there is a need to treat drug-related harm as a public health issue. And whereas Washington State has implemented a state opioid response plan and offers resources like the twenty-four hour Washington Recovery Helpline. And?
Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is an opportunity to stand beside those in our community who have lost ones, who have lost loved ones to an overdose and those who have a substance use disorder and are diligently working toward recovery.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, as overdose awareness day in the city of Lacey. Encourage anyone who has, whose life has been impacted by a substance use disorder to call the Washington Recovery Helpline at one eight six six seven eight nine one five one one. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, this day, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And Katie, I'll turn it over to you to accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. I'm Katie Strozak. I'm the Opioid Response Coordinator at Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. I just want to express my appreciation today to the city of Lacey for doing a proclamation. It's really exciting that we have multiple jurisdictions doing an overdose awareness day proclamation this year. Overdose Awareness Day really is a chance for us to bring awareness to the fact that overdose deaths are preventable, especially through the use of naloxone to reverse in-progress overdoses. And then also it gives us a chance to memorialize and remember individuals who have unfortunately lost their lives to fatal overdoses. We will be having a community event on August thirty-first, International Overdose Awareness Day, from twelve-thirty to six-thirty at the large pavilion at Percival Landing downtown Olympia, where individuals can get naloxone or Narcan kits. They can learn how to respond to an overdose. We'll have buttons, we'll have stickers, and then we also will have a space for individuals to pay tribute to or memorialize individuals who they know or community members who have unfortunately lost their lives to an overdose.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Katie.
Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is a referral from the hearing examiner for a preliminary subdivision in Bradley Park. So I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Everybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes, okay. Thank you. I can't hear any of you, so throwing me off just a little bit here. Good afternoon. I'm gonna share my screen. We can go ahead and get started. Okay. All right. So good afternoon again. My name is Sarah Shelling. I'm a planner with the Economic Development Department. And this afternoon before you is a hearings examiner's recommendation in regards to the preliminary plat of the Bradley Park subdivision. D.R. Horton is requesting this preliminary approval to subdivide fifteen point six-six acres into eighty-two lots for single-family residential development, as well as include, included is a five-acre set aside on the southern portion of the project for future development, very likely a church that is under, that'll be set aside for the current property owner. D.R. Horton would take ten acres of the site for their development. A class four forest practices application has been submitted for the timber removal associated with the project construction. The property is zoned mixed-use moderate-density corridor and residential development is permitted at a density of eight and twelve to twelve units per acre. This property is currently unaddressed, but it's located on Sixth Avenue and Fifteenth Avenue Northeast, about four hundred and fifty feet east of Sleder Kenny Road. On the screen, I have the aerial photo for, to orient you to the site. North Thurston High School, Schnook Middle School are to the south of the property. Residential development is located to the east, as well as to the west with some larger residential development to the west on Sleder Kenny and Fifteenth Avenue Northeast, which is obviously unincorporated. Thurston County is located north of the project site. Received the application in November, staff review of this application focused on compatibility with the zoning district and the surrounding community, wildlife and habitat impacts, as well as transportation impacts associated with the project. A number of comments from the community member, from community members were submitted during the application review. Concerns mainly related to wildlife and habitat impact, population growth, tree removal, traffic congestion, and some school impacts. One adjacent property resident provided comments with several photos of wildlife that she noted used the property. They included species that are listed by the Washington State Front of Fish and Wildlife as priority species. So as a result of her comments, we did stop the review clock on the application and require the applicant to submit a wildlife survey and habitat study. And as a result of those comments and the habitat study, the applicant is going to be required to set aside a mitigation area on the site for protection of the piliated woodpecker, which is a state priority species. And it will be required to set aside a site that meets the requirements of the Lacey Municipal Code, section fourteen thirty-three, which is Habitat Conservation Areas Protection. A public hearing was held on this project on July seventh. Notice of the hearing with information related to how to attend and participate in the hearing was sent to all parties of record and adjacent property owners. It was held via Zoom. And all the information about how to attend was provided to interested parties and adjacent residents. At the hearing, staff and the applicant, as well as the consultant team, provided testimony regarding the project. Discussion included traffic impact, stormwater management, and tree and habitat preservation. Although comments from members of the community were received during the application and the review period, only one adjacent property owner did attend to the hearing and provide comments on the project at the hearing. And that resident was mainly concerned with access related to his parcel and water service. So based on the staff report and exhibits and testimony at the hearing, the hearings examiner has recommended approval of the project with conditions as are outlined in his report that was submitted to the city on July twenty-first of two thousand twenty-one. This time, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, for questions and discussion.
Thank you. Can you stop sharing your screen, please? Can I get a motion?
And just so you know, I still can't hear.
Understandable. Can I, can I get a motion?
Absolutely.
Move to approve the Bradley Park subdivision as presented.
And I'll second it. Let's have some discussion. Is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor, you're on mute.
So I know they said, you said they're setting aside for piliated woodpeckers. About how much and is it, was it designed, helped design by Fish and Wildlife to make sure that it was qualifies as reasonable habitat?
So they designed a habitat mitigation plan, and if that was reviewed? They did note some concerns in the location of it. They thought that the location of the, I'll show you, I'm gonna, I'll share my screen again and show you. Let's see where they're proposing the mitigation site. So they're proposing the mitigation site in sort of the center of the site towards the south. And the habitat of the woodpecker kind of goes throughout the site. Fish and Wildlife's concern was this area is, once these trees are removed, this area, there's potential for wind throw of trees, is what the biologist thought. However, based on our forester's recommendation, he recommended as far as tree tract and tree health, that this area would be the most, the best site for tree preservation because it already has an established edge. So these trees are already wind firm and they're not going to be impacted by removal of adjacent trees. Fish and Wildlife thoughts were that the tree preservation area could be up in the northeast area of the site. And it was strictly based on removal of trees from the rest of the site. It wasn't because there were more trees in this area that were better species for woodpeckers. It was their recommendation was simply based on It was, their recommendation was simply based on survive, their thoughts on potential survivability. However, our forester's thoughts on survivability, um, was contrary to that and suggested the area to the south was the best location for tree preservation and therefore it would be the best location for, um, preservation of the species as well, for the mitigation area. Cause those trees are gonna be the ones that will most likely be long-term trees for the site.
How, how much it was set aside?
Gosh, I can't hear.
How much was set aside? Can you hear that? Uh, Sarah, there's a, you can read at the bottom of the transcript. And the question was-
I'm hearing now.
Okay.
Okay.
How much was set aside for, um?
That area, that-
That area. So, the area set aside for the trees, um, or for the habitat is uh, a point four six acres, so about half an acre, um, with thirty-two uh, existing Douglas fir trees. And then they'll also be replanting or relocating existing snags that have nest sites as well as feeding stations within that area. So I think the areas you see in red are feeding sites, um, and replanted snags for, uh, the woodpeckers.
Okay, okay.
But they-
I apologize.
No, no problem, but they were able to keep all eighty-two lots, right?
Yeah. Actually, their original proposal was for eighty lots, so saving the woodpeckers, um, and creating those habitat species area. They were able to find, um, along with some, um, they moved some streets around, um, that they were able to get some additional density even with the mitigation area.
Hmm, that's, that's good news. So, I'm not-
Yeah, it's not like the southern portion of that subdivision would be, uh, uh, like a prime lot. That's, that'd be nice. Having the trees in the backyard like that.
Right, right.
You can stop sharing your screen.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? I'm, I'm actually really happy with this proposal. It seems like we've been able to meet all the necessary con- concerns and, um, you know, for those who may not have been paying, may have paid close attention to this lot in particular, this has long been a, a troubled lot. Where, uh, there's been, um, quite a few trespassers in there, there's been fires back in there, there's been lots of problems in back, you know, in, in this lot. And to see it, you know, finally getting developed. And plus being developed so close to two schools, um, is, is really good news. We, we're, we know we're in such a, a housing charters right now. And, um, I, I actually know, I went to, you know, Chinook Middle School, and I went to North Thurston High School. And I, I know quite a few people used to walk, you know, to school from, from this area. And it's gonna be nice that there's additional homes a- around here, um, you know, for, for the kids to go to walk to school. And so this is gonna be a, a really great addition to the city of Lacey. I was glad with the set aside. Um, and it seems like it's gonna be a win-win for everyone here. So I look forward to seeing these, uh, homes getting, getting online as soon as possible. Councilman Miller?
Yeah, um, so is there, are we gonna get new sidewalks on the, on the North Thurston side and the Slater Kenny side of some portion of that?
So they will have to do their frontage improvements for, um, both Fifteenth Avenue and Sixth Avenue. Fifteenth Avenue is a county road, but as the counties, um, they were able to request mitigation and frontage improvements. Um, so they will be installing frontage improvements with sidewalks, curb gutter, um, I think a median on the Fifteenth Avenue side, as well as whatever required frontage improvements are necessary for Sixth Avenue.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there yet any other questions, comments? Then it's been moved in second to, um, adopt the hearing examiner's recommendation for this preliminary subdivision and class five forest practice permit application for the subdivision of Bradley Park, case number twenty dash three oh seven. All favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you.
So, next up on our agenda is a resolution, Resolution eleven oh seven, um, updating our Lacey City Council Policies and Procedures Manual. Turn this over to Kelly.
Good evening, council. I'm just getting my video up. Good evening. Hi, I'm gonna share my screen. Thank you for having me here this evening to talk about an exciting project that we've been working on. Uh, we've been updating and reviewing the council policies and procedures manual. The manual, as you know, was adopted in twenty eleven. And the last really thorough, comprehensive update occurred in twenty sixteen. So this update, the purpose of it was to increase the readability and the accessibility of the document. Uh, we wanted to promote inclusivity and we wanted to perform some housekeeping and maintenance. And what that means in real terms is that we made sure that the grammar and the formatting was consistent. And we really scrubbed this document to make sure that any little errors or gremlins that were hiding in there have all been cleared up. I wanna note, it's really important to note that there were no substantive changes in this version. Um, there were some additions based on council additions that were made, council-approved additions that were made in the last year, and I'll talk about those in the next slide. And I also wanted to highlight that when we come back with future changes to this document, we're going to follow the same process and request a resolution. That way, we ensure that everyone in council is viewing and approving these changes. So additions to the documents, uh, the Lacey Youth Council and the Commission on Equity, we've brought those into the document and to the Boards and Commissions section. And the naming of public parks, trails, parkways, and the naming of historic buildings, that's now in this draft. So we have three staff recommendations. The first is to adopt the edited language for clarity, accessibility, and readability. The second is to reorganize the sections from the miscellaneous chapter, which is chapter ten. Over time, new sections were added to the end of the document. We'd like to make sure that we're being accessible and transparent and placing anything that relates to an existing section, messing it back over where it belongs. So for example, in chapter ten, we currently have appointments to boards and commissions. That really better fits into chapter two with all of our other guidance on boards and commissions. Last recommendation is to adopt Resolution one one zero seven, which incorporates all of these changes and edits officially. And I do wanna note, um, I take full accountability. You did not receive the most updated draft of the Resolution one one oh seven. So, my resolution was kindly updated and edited by our city attorney, who is the ultimate editor. And he improved that draft for clarity. There's no substantive changes in his new draft either. Thank you very much.
You can stop sharing your screen. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the resolution related to the policies and procedures of the city council.
Accepted.
It's been moved in second to approve Resolution eleven oh seven, which is Lacey City Council Policies and Procedures Manual. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Conkle?
Yeah, uh, great job, Kelly. Um, I went through that and that, that was quite a bit of work going through and red inking everything and making those kind of neat changes. And, uh, kudos to you for all that effort. One thing that's a, a little concerning for me, uh, considering we're going to be uh, operating on Zoom for the foreseeable future. The, the, that we experience with technology, particularly when it comes time for us to, uh, make a vote. And, uh, my only concern is, is there something that we could do as a council to ensure that, uh, there's fair play and everyone has their opportunity to vote on a particular issue and, uh, don't get, uh, left behind from, uh, particular glitch. Uh, other than that, uh, I, I did browse through that, uh, bylaws and such, and uh, I, I think that, uh, we're on track.
Hmm, that's a, that's a good question. That's not something, you know, the, every, I think most of us have had issues with um, technology where, you know, our sound's gone out or, um, you know, something's happened. Um, luckily, so far, it hasn't happened in the middle of a really important vote. Um, but we should probably have-
It has actually for me. Not, not an important one, but, but it has happened for a vote for me. And, and as I was speaking, my computer just froze. Uh, so yeah, it, it does happen.
Yeah. And so what, what, I'm not sure if this city ma-, um, attorney, Scott, do you have any recommendation on what we would do?
Dude, so I think what we can do is add a protocol. If for some reason you're about ready to take a vote, and let's say one or more council members had a, a technological issue frozen, I think the recommendation would be is that we take a pause, give it five minutes to see if we can correct those issues before a major vote is taken, to make sure every council member has an equal chance to do that. Um, and you're right, with a hybrid world, which I think is where we're going, that is something we wanna sort of put in place as a protocol because it's probably gonna happen sometime in the future.
Dave, what, is that your, your suggestion as well? What do we?
I wouldn't have any, I wouldn't have anything to add to that, and I think city manager makes a good point, a- as does council member Conkle, in that this is perhaps some language we could look at and see what we could recommend at the council to add into the policies.
Uh, Kelly?
Something that I strongly recommend that helps with other groups is to connect audio on your phone and then you never drop out of the meeting. So if your wifi drops for your video connection on your iPad or your computer, if you're connected by your audio on your phone, you're still connected. So I know that that's not a policy approach, but it's certainly something that helps me when wifi gets unreliable.
Okay, well, let's, um, let's see if, I, I, I do think we should come back and add this to the policies and procedures, just so we, it's, it's, we haven't writing. You know, that's what's one thing about these, these documents, they're sort of living documents, and, you know, we can come back and update next month as well. And so I think this is a very good recommendation, Councilmember Conkle, and we should have something in our policies and procedures that do that. And so I, I will push this back to, to staff and Kelly, um, you know, and Dave, and, you know, let's, let's see if we can get an update that we can come back and address this issue. Uh, Deputy Mayor?
So, um, a just quick question. I actually, um, agreed that we need something that does that, that I dropped out and luckily I had talked to Lenny and he carried on, but I, I don't think a vote was taken at the time. My question is, if we connect audio by phone, would we get feedback and stuff? Cause I thought, I know, um, I, that's happened before. If I'm on my desktop and my, I, I reconnect with my iPad, I, there's feedback. Would you get that with the phone too?
No, what you need to do is just keep your phone on mute. And so if you dropped off, right, then you would switch over to the audio on your, on your phone. But, and, and I think that's a, a good backup option. I, I don't know, I still think we should have a, a policy in place of what happens if. So, so given, is there any other, uh, Councilmember Cox?
Well, I was just gonna say, I'll withdraw the motion for now, so that we can not be on the limbo.
Dave, what's the, what's your best recommendation for this? Do we, do we pass this and then come back and add it later? Do we, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, let's, so there's a motion and a second, uh, I think staff has a, a direction and and we'll, we'll come back and add this recommendation, uh, in the future.
Okay.
There, is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved in second to adopt this Resolution eleven oh seven related to Lacey City Council Policies and Procedures Manual. I'll favor that motion, signified by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, then that motion carries. Thank you. Good suggestion, Councilmember Conkle. So, next up, um, is the city manager's report.
Here in city council, uh, I have a couple items for you. The first one is a bid for the lift station forty-nine, and Jason Kishani's gonna provide that information.
All right. You guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Thank you. Uh, let me share my screen here. All right. You guys can see this? Can you see my screen?
Yep, we can see it.
All right, well, good evening, honorable mayor, uh, deputy mayor and council members. Uh, staff recommends that, um, we, uh, award contract number W twenty eighteen dash ten, uh, lift station forty-nine cross connection control to, uh, low bidder peas and sons in the amount of five hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. Uh, the engineer's estimate was six hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirteen cents. We had two bidders, um, got certain days set to begin work on October twenty twenty-one. So this, uh, project, uh, lift station forty-nine was originally constructed in two thousand uh, it's Lacey's largest lift station, um, a little bit larger than your average lift station. I can actually just show you, I think we have a picture here. Well, it's located off of, uh, Britton Parkway, just um, northwest of, doesn't, down to the east of, um, Gateway Community. Uh, I have a picture here that shows how large this lift station is. Uh, we have the main building that houses the pumps and, and it's actually two floors. And we have a bar screen so- sort of for pre-treatment, uh, next door. Um, so it's a larger than a, a, the average lift station. And what we're actually do, you'll forgive me, I'm gonna go back a few slides here. Uh, it originally was designed, uh, with potable water serving the entire site through a three-inch RPBA. That's a pressure backflow assembly. Uh, this project is, uh, you know, all about cross connection control. So we're trying to, uh, protect against any backflow into the potable system. Um, so what we're, uh, trying to do with this project, uh, which is different than any of the other lift stations, because it's so large, there's some processes that are, uh, maintenance technicians, uh, perform out there, and even with the pre-treatment, um, there's some processes that we wanna take those, uh, processes off of the, um, potable water system. So we would like to, uh, connect an air gap system to protect against those connection hazards. So the new air gap system will provide a physical break between the city's water supply and the facility processes. And I've shown a little picture of an example air gap system where it shows the storage tank and the pump skid with a booster tank, basically houses all the, the water for these processes, uh, to eliminate them being coming off of the potable system. So, that's what this project is all about, and I guess I'm, um, let's ask any questions if you guys have any.
Yeah, can you stop sharing your screen, please?
Sure.
So, it seems like we've just done some work in that same area very recently. Did, didn't we upsize the Surmaine coming out of there? Or it seems like you've done, you did something somewhat recently. You know that, where I've been around for too long and all my calendar days-
That, I'm not sure about that lift station. Double check, uh, I have to defer that question. I can definitely find out and get back to you. But, doesn't-
Yeah, no problem. It just, it just feels like, you know, we, we just did some work in that general area very, somewhat in the last several years. Maybe, maybe it's a, I'm not sure what it was. But, but my, I guess my main question is, is I don't remember very many bids coming in where we've only had two bidders. And so I, I guess, I guess we met the minimum requirements.
Right. Yeah, unfortunately, that still came below the engineer's estimate. I mean, we're definitely in a, you know, a challenging landscape, and this is a unique project that, um, you know, not every contractor is capable of, uh, doing this sort of work, but, uh, peas and sons, uh, we're definitely happy with the, the work that they've done for the city in the past. Um, so, and of course, the, the time of, uh, year that we're bidding, you know, we, we kind of were concerned that, you know, contractors got busy schedules, uh, now, so. Uh, we definitely have developed, we at least got these two bidders and, and bids were respectable. So we're, we're excited about this project.
Given that, can I get a motion?
We award Lacey contract number PW twenty eighteen dash ten to Low Bitter Peas and Sons. Ink from Tacoma, Washington in the amount of five hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Moving second, is there any discussion? Seeing that?
Question.
Yeah, go for it.
It, so what is the, the average lifespan of a, of a lift station? This one says it was constructed in two thousand nine and here we are. Um, I guess twelve years later, you know, having to pour another six hundred thousand into it. I don't know what. Is that, is that a typical expectation? Is it, should we be expecting?
Well, really this was just most the, um, backflow prevention. You know, this, I, I think really, uh, city is actually just trying to be proactive in our approach of. Protecting our system. I mean, we do have some, um, protections in place with that RP, uh, BA. But, uh, we feel like we need a little more robust, um, protection just to be, just to be sure. Because I mean, with that, uh, bar screen, a lot of stuff that happens there at that lift station that doesn't happen. Uh, with the smaller lift stations. So we're just trying to be a little bit more proactive with, uh, protecting our potable system.
That makes sense. Just think of all the housing that has come online in that area and I'm, I'm sure that lift system. It is taking all that foot and, and taking it down to, to lot off of Martin Way and so. You know, I, what, three hundred, four hundred, I mean, putting in all the multifamily housing, that's, that's gone in right around the corner. And then, of course, we're getting ready, hopefully future, uh, improvements, you know, in a, in a, uh, um. Next to Cabell is there, knock on wood as soon as possible. So there's, I mean, you're, you're right, this has to be one of the most important lift stations we have in the city of Lacey. So it makes a lot of sense to.
Actually flow to this lift station and sort of the last stop right before it gets to, uh, lot. So it's, it's more than just those, those homes right in the immediate surrounding area. It is definitely a, a, a big station and it's gonna keep. Growing in that area.
That's for sure. Is there, is there any other questions? Then it's been, uh, moved, um, moved and seconded to award this Lacey contract to the low bidder peas and sons. I'm favor that motion, signified by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries. Next up, City Manager? Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I guess the answer, Councilman Miller, is I mean, you can't have a lift station that could last anywhere from thirty to forty years. It really just depends on the volume, the activity and, um, even pump. So it really, it really does depend. Yeah. So the Gold Star Memorial request, as you recall, we had a discussion at our work session last Thursday. And Jerry Wilkins provided an update on really the nonprofit that is trying to build a Gold Star Memorial. Um, for the city of Lacey that would really represent the Thurston County region or the capital. Um, maybe for the benefit of people from watching at home, I'm gonna share my screen real quick just to show what we're talking about in terms of what that looks like. Should be able to see my screen. So this is a, a depiction of what the Gold Star Family Memorial Monument would look like. Uh, the proposal is to install this next to Slater Kinney in the vicinity of the Flag, uh, Plaza. That is owned by or basically maintained by the city of Lacey. Um, or also nearby Applebee's for just another way to understand where that location is at. Um, the request or the discussion centered around a thirty thousand dollar, um, proposal for the city to consider. Council directed staff to bring this at the next available council meeting. So the proposal for council is to consider thirty thousand dollar, uh, donation for the memorial. And this would come out of the art fund for the city of Lacey.
Great. And just, uh, for, for the public's, uh, information, uh, Councilmember Conklin's turned off his screen. He's a, on the board of directors for this, uh, project, so he won't be participating in this vote. But given, given that, can I get a, a motion?
I would move that we, uh, follow the city, the city manager's recommendation and commit thirty thousand dollars from the C art fund. In support of the Gold Star Families Memorial Project.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Well, my, my, my only two cents, uh, go ahead, Councilman Miller.
Oh, uh, well, you know, at the beginning of COVID, uh, when we were bringing, uh, you know, a new water reservoir online. Um, out in, you know, the south portion of the city, we for, we, we had to forego the. We didn't want, we didn't have to forego the, the artwork on it, but we did because, you know, we wanted to save that money. Um, and that was gonna be, you know, there were several different bids or for several, several different, uh, ways to stylize, uh, that. But in, in the end, we said, you know, we're just gonna hold on to those funds and, and I think. Um, this is, I just think that this is a good use of those funds. That we saved up, so.
Yeah, so the, you know, the, the one question I, I brought up was, um, you know, we have a big arts, you know, um, projects. On, on its way and so we, I just wanted to double check with Kelly. He's been doing some great work with that and, um. Come, this is on the list, so, uh, of, of projects for, um, under consideration. So that, um, is, makes me feel really good. And then we're also, uh, those projects are, looks like it's a little farther out in the future. And, and for, you know, um, one thing that I, I'm really proud of, and I know this council's proud of. This is that, uh, every year we put a dollar for every, um, population for, let's say Lacey population into an art fund. Um, you know, and that's the thing that when things got lean, we, we, we got away from understandably. But, you know, as our economy, you know, rebounded, we started implementing that again. And so we're, I think we're on the verge of, of bringing back some really great community art, which I really think, um, can define a city. Uh, and, and, and city Lacey in particular, you know, we, we've, we've been given the award as the most patriotic city in, in the state of Washington. And one of the most patriotic cities in, in, in the United States. Um, look at all the efforts that we have given, um, to our military families, um, and active duty retirees with the Lacey Russian Services. Uh, but I, I think it's one of our biggest achievements that we, we've had as a city. Um, a, a, a big part of recognizing the, the sacrifice, the ultimate sacrifice that people give. Um, to this country, um, is, is really left for the, the families who, who, who've lost loved ones. You know, I, um, as, as you know, um, my, my aunt is gonna be a gold, is a Gold Star member. Cause, uh, my, my, uh, my cousin, um, is, is no longer with us. Um, and so this is really, I think, gonna be, uh, important for not only for our community, but for our region. As we've been notified that this will be the only Gold Star Memorial in, in this, um, in this area. So I'm, I'm really happy that, uh, we've had a couple of great council members who are actually in this charge. Um, and it, it makes me really proud that, you know, we're, this is before us today and that we're gonna be able to support it. So, um, I will also be, uh, very in support of this motion. Is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded to contribute thirty thousand dollars, the Gold Star Memorial Fund. And, uh, also in this motion, if, if in the future, if there's a shortfall, they're gonna be able to come back and, um. Address this council if that needs to be. So I'm here that motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Thank you, City Manager.
So Mayor, just one other item, um, again, in compliance with resolution ten sixty-seven, any internal agreements that are considered routine or no cost? Um, I will report those at city council meetings. So a recent, um, agreement that was signed is between the city of Lacey and the state Otter's Office. Um, a new law, uh, was passed that requires the state and local governments to data share. Sometimes that involves personal information and, uh, we are required to sign this agreement. Uh, this agreement will be for until May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. But it's as a result of the auditing that we go through on an annual basis why that data sharing is, um, necessary. So there's no cost, it's just an agreement between the state and the city that this is, uh, something we will do during the auditing process. So I'm gonna share that with council.
Thank you. So, um. Next up on our agenda is standing, uh, general committees. Uh, and first up is the Finance Committee. And I'll go first, the, the Finance Technology Development Committee met on July twenty-seventh. Um, first up on our agenda was a discussion of the Lacey Makerspace. Great news, Lacey Makerspace was awarded a one point three million dollar grant, uh, with a twenty percent match from the, the city. Uh, the Makerspace will also receive a hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation from the Betty Trust Foundation. So that funding will go towards updating and, um, moderate and get some more modern equipment into the, um, future curriculum. The, the second phase will include collaborating with the St. Martin's University on expansion. And, uh, Michelle Pope was introduced as the new executive director for the Lacey Makerspace and let me tell you, she was very impressive. Um, she's, this, she's been in this role for a while and she's, uh, definitely hit the ground running. And, uh, one great thing that I feel like came out of this meeting is that refers really the universal support of the, um, Finance Committee. For the Lacey Makerspace. Uh, there's been, um, I, I think this has been a great success for the city of Lacey. And there's a lot of opportunities here in, in the future and it, it, it really has the full support of the Finance Committee. Um, so our next agenda item was the, uh, um, talk, talk and of course the budget calendar. It's hard to believe we're at this time where, where I know the city manager is deep into, and Troy is deep into the budget already. And so just, uh, really the overview of the budget, uh, cycle coming up is on October seventh, that we're gonna have our, our annual workshop. Um, then on the twenty-first, we'll have the, the presentation, uh, um, to the city council. There's, uh, then of course the public hearing on November fourth and the final public hearing on November eighteenth. Um, and then on December second, we'll adopt the budget. Now, one, one thing I, I, I brought up and I will, uh, bring it up here again is. Um, I think City Manager knows where, where I'm gonna say here is I've been really, really wanting to have a workshop. For the, for the community to understand city of Lacey budgeting and, and local government budgeting. I, I really think this is an opportunity to try to educate, uh, the public on what really. Is your li- local government's finances? How are they collected? How's, how is the average person affected by it? Um, you know, looking at your property taxes, what's, you know, what does that goes into that, um, decision, you know? And, and how much comes to the city? All, all, all those things, it's, it's so complicated, you know, uh, when it comes to your city budget. Um, and so I'm, I'm really hoping, you know, we were so close last year to getting a full, a, a workshop. Can, City Manager, can you tell me where we're at this year? Are we gonna be able to do?
So, we are trying to be mindful of kind of what's going on currently in the community with COVID. So we think the best way to pivot to accomplish that goal is to do a conversations with council. Um, kinda like last time, we'd like to invite our two elected leaders at the county level that deal with this most intimately. So, um, our Thurston County Assessor, which would be Stephen Drew, and then our Thurston County Treasurer, Jeff Gatman. And then again, engage on the issue of the assessment of property and well as a collection of those property taxes. Cause as you know, property taxes are typically the most, um, discussed and the most focused when it comes to paying taxes to support local government.
So when, when will, when will, I know that conversation with council happen?
So our goal is to have this prior to the budget presentation. So the budget presentation is set for October twenty-first. So we're actively working on that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'll keep, I'll keep on that. Uh, so then, um, our last agenda item, um, was our second quarter investment report. And as you can imagine, our investment report is, uh, not looking very great. Because interest rates are basically nothing. And so, um, you know. The, the good thing though is, is that we're still within our parameters. Um, the city's core fund portfolio just barely outport, outperformed the investment strategy benchmarks. So that the core fund net total returns was actually a, a negative point zero one percent. Um, but the benchmark for the period was a point negative zero two percent. So, you know, at least we're, we're above that. Uh, but the Federal Reserve outlook contains more uncertainty as the concern with inflation grows. Um, you know, that first quarter twenty twenty-one GDP grew six point four percent. That's, that's good. But second quarters, um, is expected to be stronger due to pedal stimulus spending and the reopening of the, uh, economy. But book yields are expected to fall in the range of point zero one five percent, point three oh percent. Due to the lack of clarity when it comes to inflation. Inflation's the, I think it's the one thing that we're all sort of, um, holding our breath on. Um, and so I certainly, I think a lot of us are, are feeling it day to day. Uh, for example, um, a lot of the, uh, food trucks right now, a lot of restaurants in general in town right now. Are having a very, very, very difficult time finding food. And so a, as a result, that raises the, the cost of everything, um, cause it's flying demand. And so I think there, you know, it, this is a really kind of scary time right now when it comes to inflation. We're just not quite sure how it's all gonna play out, but there's, uh, uh, we're seeing it almost on, on every item you can think of. Um, you know, there's not a great chain of, this fly chain going on anywhere, uh, for multiple reasons. But it's kinda, it's kinda scary. But, you know, the good news is that the, um, you know. What we've been able to achieve, uh, with this, with this, uh, investment strategy, going back to. Before, we didn't have an investment strategy at all. We didn't, we were, we're just going with, you know, this state funds and, and figuring out, you know. We're just being, playing it very, 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 very safe, but it wasn't a great return for our taxpayers in Lacey. And, um, ever since we went to this, you know, uh, you know, hiring a company to figure out what's the best way. And especially now more than ever, um, having a, a good policy in place that is, has been really great for the city of Lacey. Um, and so I think overall, I feel really great, you know, very comfortable where we're at and know that. We have a great team in place and, you know, and, and no matter what, they've always, they've always, um, you know, been better than the benchmark. So, um, it's, you know, so far, so good. Even though the returns haven't been as great as we, we like them to be. But so that is, uh, my report. Um, next up is the General Government Committee, Deputy Mayor.
General Government and Public Safety Committee also met on July twenty-seventh. We had two items and, um, the city council policies, procedures, manual update with changes. Uh, we already addressed and approved, um, at this council meeting. And then the second item was the twenty twenty-one fireworks call update. Um, and Chief Almata gave us an update. So, um, fireworks calls, um. The use of fireworks is as, as you know, is a symbol infraction and an officer must personally witness. Of the use of the fireworks to issue a citation. And civil infractions are considered a low level priority. I mean, obviously, um, crimes such as, um. Well, robberies, et cetera, are, take priority. Officers responded to nine fireworks related calls in the city. And staff noted that a significant unusual occurrence, um, related to a domestic call also occurred on July tw- fourth. So the incident, including activation of the Thurston County Regional SWAT Team. And Lacey police officers were on scene for a prolonged period of time, which delayed responses to other pending calls for service. And we, remember I just said they have to see the infraction for, um, responding fireworks. So the committee inquired how to improve enforcement surrounding fireworks restrictions. And the staff advised that neighboring jurisdictions at times have conflicting laws and recommend a regional approach. And that's where it was left, uh, so hopefully the region will come up with ways to address this. Because remember our boundaries are also, um. Confusing at times. We could be across the street and it could be the county. And they would be allowed to have the fireworks and Lacey would not. So people don't, neighbors often don't know. That, um, there was a lot of noise we noticed, um, throughout the thing. But again, you can't, you have to see the infraction and this other major incident was took precedent. So that's my report.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, next up is our Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee. Of course, council member Stedman is not available. Would one of the other committee members like to take this report?
Would Carolyn like to? If not, I will.
Yeah, I, I can do it. Yeah, we met on August the second and heard a report from Jeanette Seiler. Who's our recreation supervisor. She gave us an accounting of the July third fireworks spectacular, which overall was regarded as a pretty big success considering conditions on the ground with COVID and all. And the Lacey and Tune Entertainment Series was launched with the exception of movie nights. Do not include concerts this year as they have done in the past. They hope next year they can add concerts back in. And attendance is down, but there still is, I think, between two to three hundred people attending each movie night. So that, that's a pretty good crowd. Lacey Children's Day is gonna be held on October second from eleven to two at Hunter Park. And the Lacey Lighted Parade and Tree Lighting is scheduled for December sixth. So we'll, we'll see and not quite sure whether we're gonna have to make any adaptations with those, but we'll let the public know if we do.
Thank you, and next up is the Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. So our Utilities Committee met August second. All of our council members were present and the gist of our meeting, the intent to commence annexation, we're gonna be bringing this to the council for consideration uh, by the Detroit Family Partnership. It's an area on the, uh, on Marvin Road Southeast between Pacific Avenue and approximately thirty one acres. Uh, believe the intent is to create single family residence and they have an interest in annexing to the city of Lacey. And that is the gist of my report.
Thank you, uh, it's one of the reasons why I was, um, been so on the other, the other annexation of, of, of the rack. Because I knew they, um, the trades really wanted to annex um, into the city of Lacey for this project and they could not go forward uh, unless the other happened. And so it's one of the reasons I was so sort of on, on top of the other annexation, which was taking so long. So I really, uh, I appreciate the fact that we've, you know, gone forward and, um, I knew, I knew this annexation request was coming. This is the first I've heard about it, um, but I knew, uh, they definitely wanted to to annex as soon as possible. So I'm glad we were able to accommodate them.
My understanding is that the, it's gonna be another senior community and any kind of housing that we're adding to the market is a good thing right now. It is such, uh, in crisis mode still as, as we stand.
Yeah, and their projects in particular, uh, of course, uh, senior, um, senior housing, but it's somewhat affordable, uh, is, that's usually a great project that, um, they've produced in the past, so look forward to that process. Okay, uh, now we're on to, um, general, um, committee reports, I am first, but I do not have a report. This last month is a month where a lot of our, our communities take, um, take the month off. So, um, next up is Deputy Mayor.
So, um, Lot Clean Water Alliance met, um, August eleventh. We actually had quite a lot of stuff that we discussed. Um, and as you know, we have a work session, then a board meeting. So at our work session, we talked about the draft environmental impact statement for Capitol Lake to shoot's estuary long-term management project. And, um, we, this included the draft letter that the staff is proposing. And the board asked that it be made more specific as to which alternative would be more beneficial and less negatively impactful to Lot, as well as what staff pointed out as discrepancies in the water analysis evaluation section of the EIS. Since then, we have seen a new letter. It is specifically saying that the estuary or estuary hybrid is, would be a better alternative based on, um, less impact or benefit to Lot. Anyway, so then the other, um, work session topic was the draft Puget Sound nutrient general permit. And staff again prepared a letter concerning that permit. And while Lot is already providing the level of nutrient mitigation, there were items that wanted, they wanted to clarify in the permit. Because of Lot's unique status of employing nitrogen removal and successfully meeting stringent nitrogen discharge requirements for nearly three decades, Lot should be exempt from the optimization plan requirement in the permit. As with the nutrient reduction evaluation for, from which Lot is excused, the annual nitrogen optimization plan would not provide any meaningful information to ecology or to Lot on Lot's nitrogen removal processes. The annual report would merely be an exercise in paperwork. Secondly, based on Lot's experience managing the biological nitri- nitrogen removal process over decades, maintaining a TIN at three milligrams per liter on an annual basis is not likely possible. The temperature of influence dictates whether nit- a nitrification can or cannot happen effectively. Thirdly, in reference to A-CART, which is a weird acronym, all known available and reasonable methods of prevention, control and treatment. In Lot's case, our ratepayers have been shouldering the added cost of nitrogen removal for years and continue to invest in upgrades to ensure our continued ability to meet the most stringent discharges limits in Puget Sound. The fact that the investments have been made in the past does not lessen the impact to our ratepayers that, uh, that have, they have experienced. And then lastly, on that letter, the permit is unclear if it suggests that other entities need to handle wastewater before it gets to wastewater treatment plants. And the question was, is it suggesting septic systems, which is contrary to wastewater management? And if this element remains in the permit, they ask to have define, um, septage defined. Is it intended to include step tanks, debris tanks, OSS loads, et cetera? So that was the other letter. The other, um, issue that came up at work session was the North Henderson Property House. And it was determined that Lot does not need this property. And Tumwater is really interested in obtaining it to help with affordable housing. And so they're now both in discussions over this option. The last item on the, um, work session, as I've brought up many times, is we've been talking about cost of service study updates. And so this last update, um, discussed the ERU, which is equivalent resident residential unit. Historically, the ERU was based on nine hundred CFS per month. And there are some differences also between cities, such as Lacey has a snowboard policy and other kinds of things. So not all cities are exactly the same, um, over, based on this nine hundred CFS. There are more customers below nine hundred CFS per month, but the majority of use is by those that are above CF, uh, CFs per month. So even though there are way more that are below that, way more are, I mean, a small minority is using way more water, um, wastewater. And the staff discussed that when the study started, they assumed the parity issue was between commercial versus residential, such as residential users were supporting commercial use. But the study found that the parity actually is between residential users, such as minority, um, of residential users using more than nine hundred CFS per month. And if we lowered the residential use overall, it would significantly increase the non-parity for commercial while addressing the, the underlying problem, uh, while not addressing the underlying problem, which is some residents using much more water sewer per month. So, um, I hope that's somewhat clear.
Are, are they, are they gonna re- raise it or are they gonna lower it or are they keeping it the same?
Well, here's what they decided, commercial is billed on volumetric anyway, actually, actual use rather than a flat rate. So, uh, but they realized their, their assumptions were wrong. And so the next steps will look at affordable housing and whether we can address volumetric for residential use or how to help those users needing affordable housing without causing additional burdens while still addressing rate pair parity. But we're not, but for now, we're just going to keep the status quo until we look at residential parity within residential use rather than, um, and we may think or the board may suggest after they hear the study that maybe everyone needs to go on residential, including volumetric. But being a, um, a sliding scale to those that need affordable housing. Cause that's part of the, the parity issue. Okay, that's, I, I hope that was clear.
I never understood why one, when residential will be on volumetric, just like commercial. It isn't, for me, that doesn't make sense, cause you're, seems, or who are trying to save water are not being
Exactly, but, but remember that volumetric then will hurt those lower income that have larger families. So you, you, there's that issue, so, um, but yes, for a long time, we've been a flat rate for residential, but now, maybe it's because Olympia now kind of, uh, gives a more flexible sliding scale. And so maybe Lot needs to look at that too. But that's kind of looked, showed some of the assumptions being, um, wrong, actually, so. Okay, business meeting, we, uh, discussed the draft environmental impact statement for Capitol Lake, um, it shoots estuary. And we had a presentation by the State Department of Enterprise Services, um, EIS lead Carrie Martin, who's the project manager and the lead EIS consultants. And this was similar to what we had here at our work session, only it involved more extensive water quality analysis, which definitely impacts Lot. And which, and then talks about which alternatives will impact Lot, uh, the most. And a vigorous question and answer period then occurred. Because, uh, obviously, um, well, not obviously, you'd have to hear the presentation, but the, in the EIS, they really downplayed the impacts to Lot through the other alternatives besides the estuary and hybrid estuary, which the lake will do that. The board authorized the executive director to, um, enter into a contract with HDR Engineering, of Bellevue, Washington, in the amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty three thousand for design services for the sludge thickener improvements project. And then the board authorized the award of a contract for the collection system piping rehabilitation project to the low responsive bidder, um, Instapipe of Tumwater for the bid of one million twenty four thousand eight hundred and fifty eight dollars and eleven cents, which also includes sales tax. And then staff updated the board on the status of several capital projects, including the biological process improvements projects at Martin Way reclaimed water plant improvements, such as the blower upgrade project. In addition, so those were the major items, but then they had, uh, reported out on a couple issues. One safety issue, an intruder shattered and entered the wet, shattered windows and entered the wet center August first, damaged an educational display, several security monitors and multiple windows, including several art police assistance and secured the area to prevent the intruder from entering other areas of the facility. The Olympia Police Department responded to the incident and subdued the suspect who was taken into custody. So, uh, that was a real concern. Luckily, they caught the suspect. They didn't get back into the lab and other parts of the, the, um, treatment plant, luckily. COVID nineteen emergency response, at least eighty six percent of Lot's staff are fully vaccinated. Due to rising concern about virus variants, staff has been directed to wear facial coverings when working indoors to share spaces. And some staff are returning to remote work to protect Lot's essential workers. Lot's Regional Service Center, Wet Center, Wet Science Center and the East Bay Plaza remain close to the public. And that's my report on Lot. There was no meeting in August for the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency. The Personnel Subcommittee did meet to discuss process for hiring a new executive director. That's my report.
Councilmember Cox.
Alrighty, I have a report on intercity transit authority, which met last night. Uh, we conducted a public hearing on the five-year van pool fair. It's called a fair demonstration project. And what this does is vastly, vastly simplifies the fairs for riding in a van pool to basically a flat rate per miles that you ride. So it's, it's, we're getting some feedback and it's all very positive about making the accounting of it much simpler. So that will come up for a vote in September. Intercity Transit rerouted Route sixty off of Enson Road for safety purposes. So the bus now travels Martin Way and Lily Road. It's a little bit inconvenient for people who are trying to get to jobs and to appointments through there, but the buses, we're having trouble getting through. Transportation Security Administration has extended the federal mask mandate for bus passengers now through January eighteenth of twenty twenty two. And there's several other COVID related things. Their staff there is, is seeing an increase in COVID cases. And they're taking steps, but basically it's threatening, you know, intercity transit's ability to keep service on the street because infected employees mean that the people who work around them have to quarantine as well and they've had kind of short staffs going on. And they've, they've been researching, uh, issues around requiring vaccinations as a condition of employment in response to the governor's request that local governments follow suit. And so they're looking at a resolution that would take effect a- as quickly as possible, perhaps by the end of October. So there are some, obviously, conversations to be had with the unions and that sort of thing. But, um, last night, there, there was considerable report, support for it. Voiced by authority members, and I think that's the direction they'll go.
Councilmember Miller.
One report for our Thurston Thrives met on, uh, the sixteenth, uh, Monday. We did a, a good presentation for, um, the Foundation of Delta Dental of Washington. And this, uh, while it may seem like we, why is, why are we having dental people meet us? It kind of lines up with the, 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 um, Thurston Thrives new initiatives, which are, um, reducing the disparities, uh, in, in, uh, health and housing from, you know, our BIPOC community to the white community. And so, uh, healthcare, uh, and the ability to, you know, afford and pay for dental industry and these types of things come into play when you talk about, you know, trying to do some kind of playfield leveling. Um, if you can't make it to a dentist or can't afford a dentist and your, uh, disposable income goes toward that, uh, you have less money to spend on things like housing and so on and so forth. So oftentimes, those things get missed or, uh, not, uh, no attention at all. And so, uh, the presentation uh no attention at all. And so uh the presentation uh suggests that, you know, in communities who, where, where people don't have the resources to do that, then, you know, that they could fill in that gap and, and kind of help those people out uh by providing some of those services even in a mobile structure, which I thought was pretty awesome. Uh we did uh do some, some work uh that uh individual breakout work where, you know, we were supposed to kind of show how, what our team's group area uh is doing uh that is helping the main initiative. While we couldn't draw a straight line between healthcare disparities and housing, uh we weren't able to, to contribute a little bit in that. Um you know, with, with more inventory coming to the market, there is a potential that uh you know, some of the rents may go down. Um and I think the city of Lacey is doing a great job of approving these projects because, you know, if we can get some more inventory on the market, then maybe this won't be such an expensive place to live after all. And I know that some of us, you know, while we have been seeing some gains, uh I would sacrifice some of my gains for a, a larger, more robust community because you know, all that disposable income really helps out the small business owners uh when we can, you know, get people to, fit more people in our community.
Uh and that is my report. Uh there are um a lot of projects that are about ready to come online. Um I'm not sure what the latest number is of the units that are in, in the pipeline, but um Scott, I would really like Rick to maybe update this council on some of these bigger projects coming online. It's, it's weird, you know, because a lot of times we never, we don't know about these projects if they're within the appropriate zone, right? The only time they come before us if it's, needs to be a conditional use. But if it's going through the regular process, sometimes even as council members, we don't know of these big projects that are coming online that's really gonna have a big, you know, influence on, on our community. And so uh I would, I would like to request that Rick sort of give us an update on, on where we're at on housing units, you know, to, to date, you know, and how many housing units were expected to come online this year. If you could, you could pass that on to Rick just to give us a quick update. Um
Oh, go ahead.
And I'd like to do, have him do it at a council meeting too, so the public can hear it, not just the work session. Um I, I'd really appreciate that. And in tell you the truth, I'd appreciate it if you'd do it on a uh you know, like maybe a quarterly or regular basis. So like I said, we just sometimes we don't even know about what, what's coming through the pipeline um as, as your elected officials.
Sure. We, we have given uh updates at land use, but definitely we can give those to the full council too.
I'd kind of make, like to hear about what is market rate and, and, and affordable housing as well overlay because it's, we, if it's just all market rate, it, it doesn't get at those that actually need housing too.
I mean, we need every housing we can get, but it'd be really nice to get an update on where we're at. I'm, I'm sure that land use has gotten some updates, but I, I haven't heard anything recently. And I know, I know there are some, quite a few projects that are in the pipeline. It'd be great for the public to hear about that too. Thank you. Uh councilmember Kunkel.
Thank you, Mayor. So our uh Visitor and Convention Bureau met Tuesday afternoon. And some of the highlights we discussed are the adoption of new technology that will allow us to better track our travelers in a more comprehensive way. It will give us more insight on where our focus on tourism should be and how to use more effective marketing for tourism. It's a pretty involved system. Don't ask me to explain it. Our bureau is also uh looking for a new office for the future expansion. As it is imminent, we are taking on a, a few more bodies. I encourage the board to consider Lacey as an option, uh bringing the uh Visitor and Convention Bureau to Lacey. And I even suggested that uh they look at the current Lacey Chamber location because they are moving and it would satisfy their, their space needs and concerns uh with the shared use of, of a boardroom and some other things. So they are looking into that and that could be a, a potential thing to happen. There wasn't any uh rejection or objection from the, the board. So we may have the VCB in Lacey. We'll see. And then uh the VCB is also doing away with paid memberships. Uh memberships are going to be free. And uh the reason behind that is it's gonna give them a little more stability in the market and be able to uh focus on Thurston County as a whole, rather than just catering to specifically the members of the VCB. There's still gonna be opportunities for advertising uh to the members that want to contribute. And uh we know that uh the incentives that we're creating will make up for the shortfall because the uh membership uh budget accounts for a very small portion of our overall budget. And it's a lot of interesting how that turns out. And uh we have a really good uh CEO at the helm that is giving us some new ideas on, on how we can do things better. That is all I have. That is the only uh meeting I had since the last council meeting.
Great. I, I met the new executive director of the uh Visitor Convention Bureau. I, I was very, very impressed with, with her. I think she's bringing some great ideas. I think that what, you know, her, her ideas about visitors coming to our region is spot on too. And it's funny because, you know, I was, I was a longtime member of the VCB from, from this council and on their board of directors and um and I was a proponent for a long time saying, hey, we shouldn't have paid memberships, right? It's like, we should be promoting every single business and every single venue regardless if they, if, if they're paying for it or not. We shouldn't, you know, be too
Right. That gives us leverage as competitors with some of these other regions that are that are trying to promote tourism in their area. We have more to draw from uh if we don't have a membership role that we have to cater to. So I agree and I'm I'm glad that we made that move and it was, I believe it was unanimous. I don't think there was any objection at all.
Hell times, I, I brought that up years ago and I, I couldn't, I had to move on it. So it's, it's really good, really good news to say that the VCB is going in that direction. Uh before we wrap things up, um I'm gonna turn things back to Scott. I, I know there's been a lot of questions on um hours for the city of Lacey are, you know, I, I know it's kind of a crazy time right now with with the COVID cases in Thurston County, you know, recently at an all-time high. And so can, can you just give, give the public a quick update on, you know, where we're at with Lacey and services and and any, you know, if you go in City Hall, what, what are the requirements, so on and so forth?
No, I appreciate that. So right now our hours are nine to five, Monday through Friday. So those are going to be our standard hours going forward. So anytime you need to come in, get a building permit, um if you have to pay, um even ask a water question, you know, we're available to open the doors from nine to five. Um maybe even a little bit earlier by phone if you're trying to deal with a building permit type situation. In terms of coming into City Hall, it is a good reminder, we're now all under a state mandate for masks for indoor. Um so if you come into City Hall, you need to wear a mask. We do have masks available and we also have sanitizing stations in case you'd like to use those too. From an employee perspective, we've also tried to be mindful of just the, we're obviously in a period of higher transmission. So we are, um you know, we've canceled most in-person meetings unless they're just absolutely necessary, like say for training for police. Um we are canceling future travel requests. Um we're really trying to minimize um really the exposure that could actually come about because of COVID nineteen. We've also structured our workforce to do more flexibility when it comes to teleworking, also staggering work time. So we don't have situations where we have more employees showing up at one point at a city facility, as well as kind of breaking into teams to just provide more resiliency, if you will. So our main priority is to make sure that we can maintain continuity of operation. So that is our biggest priority right now, given this time of sort of uh higher transmission in Thurston County that we're experiencing right now.
Thank you for that update. And that means that we're all at the end of our agenda. Appreciate everyone being here. Everyone stay safe, enjoy this, and continue to be good weather. It's been, it's been crazy how long we've gone uh with, without rain. It's, it, it's funny, I, I usually never wish for rain or hope for rain, especially uh, you know, in my private business, but I'm sort of like we need a couple of good days of rain here in the Pacific Northwest. It's been, it's been a long time. But until then, um uh I, you know, everyone enjoy it while, while it's here. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey. And I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned. We'll see you.